A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Meeting is now called order. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Are there any conflicts of interest? Not, we'll consider the agenda approved. All righty, Madam Auditor, would you please read the minutes from last week's meeting?
So there are two sets of minutes, one from the eight AM meetings. So first at eight AM, as advertised, Gene Hayden, Chair Presiding, opened the public hearing regarding the proposed property tax. There were no written objections or oral objections. Steve and Paul attended in person, Cindy and Bonnie attended via Zoom. Cindy had questions regarding the mailing mailed statements that haven't arrived at citizens' homes yet. At eight thirty seven AM, Hayden closed the hearing. The Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Gene Hayden, Chair Presiding, members President Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved on motion. The Board recognized claims for public health and approved claim trial at other departments. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to approve the purchase of six sixty thousand ton of maintenance gravel with ten percent crushed limestone from Stratford Gravel Inc., Carlson Pit, to be spread on roads in 2025. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to approve 2024 desk control application agreement with RNC desk control. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rosberg, to set time, date, and location for public hearing regarding the budget amendment fiscal year twenty three twenty four for April sixteenth 2024 at ten AM in the Board of Supervisors Boardroom on the second floor of the courthouse. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve a public hearing for budget fiscal year 2025 for April twenty third, 2024 at ten AM in the Board of Supervisors Boardroom on the second floor of the courthouse. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the appointment of Carla Doral as Charter Oak Township Trustee to fill vacancy until the next eligible election. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Crawford County. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned eleven forty two AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
All right. Anybody have any write offs or? Anyway, otherwise, we will consider those agreed also. Thank you, Terry.
I just made note, I've got probably more phone calls last week. I mean, I did spur people's interest, but you know, we don't control the post office. Obviously, you got a lot of people that called you that did not. They didn't get them until like Tuesday or Wednesday morning. So that's all I'm gonna say about it. I'm not blaming, like, fingered anybody, but more people upset that they didn't, you know? And then the rest of them were, didn't understand them.
Yep.
Yeah, they were asking, is that my taxing? Yeah, I had, I had a lot of calls.
Same here, a number of them were like, what is this?
Yeah, exactly.
This is.
It's an extra cost.
And I just told them all to call Terry.
Mandated by the state to fund the company.
Yeah.
That's pretty much what I told him too. I think you still have an opportunity on the twenty third to come and voice your opinion towards the budget.
Right. Mine came late also, I got two of them, and then I also got Dickinson County and Harrison County late too, so everybody's sort of coming in.
Yeah, so we can't control the post.
No.
Nope. Or where they've been.
Pretty sure they.
That's crazy. But the postal service did get inundated from ninety nine counties, thousands and thousands of mailings. So, I mean, it doesn't function the greatest daily. So, you know what I mean? We had seven thousand envelopes alone and we're not that big of a county.
Just us.
Yeah.
And then you had a lot of a return too.
We have had, but I wonder what that cost was across the state? If you added up every single county.
Big boost.
Probably grabby about hearing it too, so I don't know if I wanna know.
Yeah.
I know, cuz ours was almost five thousand.
The ones that came back.
They need to know, you know, you gotta have transparency for the voter, but I mean.
I mean, at ten thousand a county, that's a million bucks.
Right.
Wow, what are you getting, some of your?
Right, someone very wish she said ours was around five to the percent.
Five, I wanna say like Polk and Johnson, then we're like sixty to eighty thousand.
Sure, just for their county.
But what did, what happened like with the ones that were returned with the little yellow sticker on them? How do you handle that?
We've been double checking the information in our tax system, trying to make sure that the next mailings that go out, like tax statements, hopefully aren't affected.
Get some of those.
We have gotten, we've gotten a bunch back.
That have yellow stickers on, cannot deliver.
Yeah, and it says like forwarding expired and things like that, so. Yeah, we're trying to find a resolution to that.
May I ask, are those still in your office?
Yeah.
Wouldn't doubt it.
So if somebody's missing theirs.
They could ask us if we have it.
Okay, did you guys hear that?
No, we were sitting.
I know you were, that's all right.
Figuring out the money that we just spent on mailers.
The county got back about us back about this big with the yellow stickers that said cannot be forwarded. So if somebody calls you, they could possibly still be sitting here that the forwarding address had expired or something. So they could be sitting right here, not knowing where to go, they were returned. So that's one possibility of it. I'm still actually missing a few, cuz these all just showed up last week.
We were doing simple math and we figured it costs us five thousand dollars, we just had seven thousand mailers, seventy one cents per mailer, and we times that times three million across the state. Maybe it's not three million, but that's ten point one million costing property tax.
Yeah, see, and then the incidental costs that aren't really forwarded to people are, is all the time and effort that the Department of Management put in to creating the file to be downloaded to our software company, which is Tyler Technologies, and there are probably half a dozen of those companies that do that service for counties. And then the auditors that spent the time proofing, you know, trying to make sure things were gonna flow well, and then getting that filed to our company that we hired, that cost us five thousand dollars, so.
So for that five thousand dollars, they like.
It was a lot, a lot of work went into that.
Did they have this standard?
Cost of paper and envelopes.
The ironing, Craig, you hit the nail on the head. Let's cut property taxes and then turn around and add a step that.
I know.
Think of it, the company that you hired, did they have this form?
Yeah, every, so everybody had, everybody used that format, and I believe that came from our, from the Department of Management. They're the ones that developed the form and then those software companies.
Think of that, I mean, that's a lot.
Or like our Tyler Technology Company that we use in our real estate.
Other things that really.
Yeah, they adapted so our, our data could fill the form.
Even my eighty nine year old father said, why don't they just publish a website?
Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh.
Why do they have to mail this to me? What's the point?
It really means.
If I wanna go look at it, I can go look at it, if I don't, I don't have to.
Right, instead of spending the money.
We're gonna have to do that every year, absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of.
That's part of the step now.
Yep.
What a waste, it means nothing.
Too many dollar a year.
Let your legislators know. What a waste. Did they understand theirs? That's what I'd like to know.
Well, I can honestly tell.
That's the question right there.
And if they did understand it, then they see how ridiculous it was.
You know, though, I just wonder what they, you know, I mean, cuz I know taxes has been a frustration for them down there. I just wonder, I wonder if they were just trying to help facilitate understanding and I think whenever they're doing that, they should probably sit down with the auditors.
I know, that's the problem, they don't, they don't, whether the auditors or the supervisors or the county engineer or the treasurers, whoever it is, they don't, the department or departments that administer these things, these items, that they don't have those discussions with.
So what's interesting to me is if you look at the back of them, I have three different counties here and two different taxing, and they're so.
Do you own land in three different counties?
Four. But look, just, just take and go across stuff.
We're in the presence of Rome.
No, 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 I, they're, they're, just, they come to my house, it's all to the Hayden Company.
You're not even nice today.
Were you mean?
Hey, man.
That's all right, I could take it.
It was in good.
It's okey dokey.
It was in jest.
I get it. So anyways, I thought that it was interesting, the back of it, how that maybe is clearer than on the front, if you ask me, just to compare them.
Or doctor.
Anyways, so I think we'll start with Ty today.
I'm pretty sure on Greg's.
Craig will be last for two weeks in a row.
See, I just had a couple things from my ag steering committee.
All right.
Try to get all this stuff right. Okay, the EPA has never had a, let me see what they call it here. Well, anyway, it's a newly appointed position. They'd always been, each president would appoint it, so there was never any consistency in how it would run or operate, which may or may not have been a good thing, you have to decide for yourself. But there's a newly appointed head of the office as Agriculture and Rural Affairs. And as I was kinda listening and going over things in my head, I thought, well, it could be good in some counts, because now we actually have somebody consistently that groups like Farm Bureau or anybody else that's representing rural America, they've got a consistent group of people to talk to. It's not gonna be a real big office at first, but they did, he did point out that it will grow. I mean, it's got places that they're wanting to also take care of, so there'll be people assigned to that. So it's gonna grow. I mean, typical Washington bureaucracy, it starts to get expensive because we keep growing. But, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that ain't what he was implying, but that's what I was hearing as he's saying it, maybe I've become cynical about spending over the years, but they'll do the typical EPA things, whether it's the, you know, WOTUS and, I don't like it for my notes here. They, you know, they wanna reach out with, work with the rural partners, and once again, it'd be like the Farm Bureau's, the cattleman's and the porks and, and obviously any other agency that's representing rural America, and then NACO and stuff like that, that obviously represents the interest that we, we do for our rural American communities, but. I don't, I know, I just, it's a new thing that's gonna be happening, so I guess we'll just see how it builds out, you know, I mean, EPA right away, you know, if you're a farmer, you got your eyebrow raised when somebody mentions them three letters, you know, DNR EPA, oh, gosh, what are they up to now? But, you know, they, they wanna additionally be involved in pesticide registration, farm worker safety, obviously the WOTUS, meat and poultry processing, you know, which they're, you know, we've, we've got departments for some of that, I mean, and then he comes back at the end and he brought up where, but they don't wanna over, you know, basically overlap other, and other extras, extras, entities of the government, which is exactly what they always end up doing. I mean, it's just like with the DOT and Department of Labor's most recent law and making companies pay, pay a driver for the ten, two of the ten hours that he's supposed to be off duty, because that's still considered a labor, I mean, none of it makes sense when they don't work together. So hopefully, this guy, you know, but, you know, your first guy might always have good intentions, and then somebody else gets in there and pretty soon they're not paying attention to what else is going on.
Smaller scout can work by all day.
Well, I was, I, I try, I try to take my cynical hat off, you know?
I appreciate that.
Sometimes it's hard. Seems to be getting it putting itself back home. But, oh, and then one lady asked about the Endangered Species Acts and stuff like that, and I don't know, you know, pest, you know, and she was worried about pesticides and stuff. I said, so endangered species must be bugs to her too, so I mean, I thought, you know, if it's, what if it's a gut worm or something like that, are you, are you worried about killing them all? Kinda like to, but, you know, I mean, that's.
There's another step been put in, the pesticide application this year, you know, we gotta fill out a paperwork online that is, gotta go along the line and decide if any of your farms are in a, what they, they call it, critical, something like others, like, oh, we never had to do this before, but now the EPA says we have to do this because of the list coming forward. It took me like thirty seconds to do it, I mean, I'm printing my apps and I'm good to go, cuz then Western Iowa's not in that restricted area.
What's the penalty of going?
It's nicer just to have that paper in case somebody from EPA comes flying around and pulls your straight over and goes through the bank and.
But I will.
So, I mean, they are involved already, so by now establishing another, then we're gonna get involved in it, kind of scares me.
I, you know, they've been involved in it, but because there's not been a consistent organizational structure to it, cuz every president appoints a different head, kinda like Department of Transportation. So basically, it's never consistent, now, now supposedly, if I understood everything right, that's kinda be, gonna be more consistent. And I will say, I've learned a lot from this chair that we have for that, this ag committee, our rural committee. He's a, he's very thoughtful, I mean, he's a, he's a Republican from up in northern New York, you know, he's got a farm, but he's also, I mean, he's highly educated, a really sharp fellow, and, you know, you can see his objective as we're working through this is to build a relationship with this guy, you know, right from the get-go, so that we can have, hopefully, positive influence or a positive voice with this agency, the part of, this part of the EPA, which has got more to do with the rural and agriculture area, so, anyway, we'll, we'll see how that turns out. Hopefully, hopefully good.
There's always, always the hope that this will actually bring some common sense.
Yeah, you can, oh, there's, there's always that hope. Just remember, it's Washington.
That's for sure.
Yeah. Really didn't have a lot of update on the farm bill, you know? I, I, if there's the growing consensus that there won't be one this year, you know? I mean, before the election, hence this year, cuz then there won't be in the quote unquote, if, if Biden wouldn't win the lame duck session, but then that's still lame duck session for the politicians in the Senate and the House that didn't get reelected, so you probably won't see anything, you know? And then now with the House's margins so narrow, I don't anticipate any farm bill movement. However, they're still working on stuff, you know? G T Thompson's, one of his people that works on the farm bill was, was talking about, nah, just really, nothing much.
Was there any significant changes that they're trying to accomplish in the new farm bill?
Well, other than what I went over in the past, I mean, you know, there, there's, this guy, all he was really talking about mostly was the broadband stuff and, and then rural healthcare stuff, you know? I mean, stuff that has to do with rural America, you know, but, you know, as far as what affects what you guys are doing, you know, whether it's conservation, you know, I mean, any of that stuff. I, I, that's just kinda, right now, it's steady as the ship rolls and let's not hit a pier kinda thing. Get through that little, yeah, that little part about the Baltimore bridge, Francis Key Bridge, that's just. Anyway, and I, I, nobody actually mentioned anything about that, so that's.
See, there was a second bridge that was hit by a barge in Oklahoma?
Yep, down Oklahoma, I've been, been across that one too. You gotta start, stop traveling these bridges and jinxing them. That wasn't, you know, that was, it's a longer bridge, but nothing like that, Francis Key Bridge. That, you know, when you watch that one, I mean, this is off topic, but when you watch how that fell by just hitting that one pier, that's a little alarming, don't you think?
That's a typical, that's why all our trust bridges get inspected yearly instead of biyearly, cuz they're hurt, they're, they're going to, one piece fails.
The whole thing goes.
That's the drawback, there's no redundancy on trust, strong as hell until one piece fails.
Until one piece fail, yeah. Yeah, that's, that was, and, yeah, yeah, well, I was down talking to Paul before the meeting, some stuff about bridges, you know, just other, he's gonna talk about it, but that was just something I thought about when I watched that video a few times, I thought, wow, I hope, I mean, we don't have any long bridges like that, by all of it, wow.
No barge traffic.
Not a lot of barge traffic on the border either. All right, so I mean, that was, that was kinda the tip, it was, it was a shorter, sweet, short but sweet meeting with them too, I mean, nothing, nothing really earth shattering, you know, just coming out of legislative conference, so we covered a lot of ground at that, mind you, it's, we're just kinda starting to prep and get ready for the annual conference and stuff like that. Other than that, you know, we've talked about some of the people calling it.
Annual's in June?
No, annual will be, it's actually after, or it's before our fairs this year, so right after the Fourth of July time, so, big worst time in the year to be in Florida.
Yeah.
They say that's how we get our cheap hotel. Okay, I wonder how bad they are. But. You know, we'll see how that all builds, I mean, there's so much stuff, nut going on in Washington too, I mean, it's just little details, you can still work on the little stuff, but, I don't know, I don't.
That's a racial very out of date.
Nothing else that really constituted anything that we haven't talked about already.
Okay.
And. I can't think of anything else. I, I did talk to Paul, I mean, the guys were out with the motor grader going and getting, trying to get these roads worked over good, since we've had some consistency and moisture for a change, and I was pretty excited for that. I did ask him about it. I've never seen one of our motor graders doing it, and when I was coming up through Oklahoma, coming up through Camp, bottom of Kansas the other day, there was a guy working one of their gravels and he had his motor grader, Kyle, you might actually understand this a little bit, but he had an offset, Paul said you can turn, you can articulate them.
You can articulate them.
Boy, and was he, he shaping that road slicker and greased to all, I mean.
By doing that, you can actually kinda wider, cuz your blade is almost, is, is you're cutting full sixteen, but you're turning the machine to, if you're just narrowing and you're gonna cut at an angle, you're shortening your cutting distance, but articulate machine, you're, you're leaving the full sixteen foot.
Good.
And you're not running wheels on wheels, so you're offsetting your wheels, so you're not, your bumper.
Aren't on the track.
Well, it was, he was building a beautiful.
We used to have, there might be some guys that still do that.
I'm sure he wondered why that truck stopped watching. But I did, I had stopped watching. Yeah, I should have, actually, I never thought about that, but yeah, he was, he was really working that road well, I mean, and they just had a bunch of rain too, so, and I must thought, gosh, I wonder if our guys do that, I've never seen one doing it, maybe they do do it, but I've never, you know, somebody like Merritt or somebody that's got a ton of experience.
Especially on your wider roads, they seem to do that, but, you know, I haven't seen anybody, but I'm out there watching every day.
Paul just says the machines are amazing what they can do. He says, we, we just kinda start to tap their potential, but, you know, with that last training and stuff, I know they talked about some of that stuff, I remember hearing him talk about it now, so, anyway.
All right, we'll move over to Kyle.
Well, I just was looking over, you know, you look this over, look this over, as far as the lease, and I just, I didn't see this before, but under item numbers seven, yeah, removal of Stover not allowed, without written commitment from the Board of Supervisors, but I think, uh, we should put on our, it's going, our hopes that are going, plan of going into the CRP program, we should, if Stover is to be removed, it needs to be removed no later than January first. That way, people bail if they're not sitting there and we're trying to get it seated.
And with bales sitting in the way.
Yeah.
So are you proposing that we make that change before the auction starts?
Yeah, yeah, what's, I guess, I was reading through it, I mean, everything kinda spelled out in there, the things we were worried about, the Conservation Reserve Program, I mean, by signing this lease today, you actually acknowledge that we're terminating the lease also, and that, it says in there that we're, the wording is, where we kinda ran into a problem last fall, that we didn't get cooperation from the current seven.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Yeah, so. That's about the only thing I see, and I just wanted to, I don't know why I didn't catch it earlier.
I'm glad you did.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I think everything we announced prior to the auction.
Right, sell them that that's an update, so they're not bidding on it.
We can, I can go over and maybe have, you know, me, I just go over and have Martha redo it.
I just saw Martha leave, but I'm sure one of the secretaries could do that.
I could probably put that in if you word it for her.
If you wanna take care of that.
Do we need written present, permission and not just consensus or?
I don't, you know, with.
Why do we need, they're gonna allow it anyways.
Right, I think, I think we could just remove that. Put it all in there, Stover is to be removed from property, it needs to be removed no later.
Cuz technically, we're given permission today.
Exactly, you know, if they win, if they are the high bidder.
Right, to tell them they bid on it and knowing that you're taking off. So I would strike that and just put in that year's eight.
Stover must be removed by January first.
Yeah, I don't think that's too technical enough.
Probably not a deal stopper for anybody that's.
Well, it potentially is, cuz there's about how you live it, yeah, so, I mean, by saying we can't remove it, you're kinda jammed up with it.
But I think in, in essence of what we're trying to accomplish today with it, yeah, we're giving them permission today.
Yeah.
Just like you said, for seating it, we don't really want all that on there anymore.
Can I do, right, we would encourage.
Kinda want them to get it off of there.
Right.
All right, you wanna, you wanna go take care of that, we'll move on?
Yeah, and the other thing, what you were talking about was the, the, the calls I got on that, so, you know.
There is one, all right, we'll see a little bit.
People who use an old.
You wanna go next? Craig, last.
Yeah, I've got a few things, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna take off early, I have a board, executive board meeting with ISAC and it's to deal with the new hiring of a director.
When's he, when's he, when's he built that?
Back, but it's coming up here like in June, July.
I thought he was gonna be here for annual. So it's probably right after that.
Um, he's definitely helping with the process and laying out the steps of what to go through. There is an executive board committee within our board, a smaller group that is helping for the high, that's gonna narrow it down to, you know.
Couple of guidance applications?
I haven't heard yet, I'm hoping to hear tomorrow what, where we're at. I know we have two with internal.
Internal.
Two internal.
Rachel, that's my guess. Okay.
But, I don't know how much I can say.
No, I'm just curious.
Well, you're two internal.
Yeah.
And like I said, it'd be interesting how tomorrow goes and what our updates are and the next step.
You've gotta go somewhere for that.
Yeah, I'm on leave, I get six in the morning and get there by eight. So I got that tomorrow, region twelve is next week, I said you responded back to.
On the calendar.
I did get some phone calls on our mailers, one gentleman was very frustrated that he got it later and didn't understand what it was and still didn't understand the evaluations and our levy rates and that, our levy rates include schools and everything else, and, I mean, after walking it through with, I mean, kinda, okay, I, I get it, I just gotta explain it and even the unnecessary part of the mailer, and he said, I get that, that he wasn't wrapped about that either. Now, I had, I talked back and forth a few times with Scott Johnson, Carroll County Supervisor, they are now in the process of hiring a new assessor, that's why I text you yesterday and thank you for responding, and they were wondering about the examining board and some of the steps, so they're gonna be going through the same K D on the Carroll.
Oh, Carroll, yeah.
Same thing they are.
Be vacated, so it's just like he said it, they, or?
I don't know any of those details.
Okay.
Um, he was just wondering about the application to go examine where they're going to.
And the backstory on that would be, you know, if it goes to the current assessor, they may not give out, the examining board is supposed to kinda stand separately to act as a buffer between. Conference and.
He's after a few other things, I mean, he was wanting to compare county attorney budget, which I think he got that, he talked to you. He asked me about that, um, then we talked about opioid funds, Carroll County has not decided what to do with little field funds, or actually, they put them into the C D.
Didn't they?
A seven month C D until they can get a better grasp for what they wanna do, um, but on that note as well, we did have our M R H C hospital board meeting last week and, um. Taya and Michelle Anderson, we're gonna put together a report for us, and it sounds like they've been very active in schools. And getting out there and, and not just within our county, but within the Potem and Shelby and the other counties that are using them as well, um. So that'd be good to hear, hear back what they've all been up to. And, um.
Should we put them on the agenda for next week?
Well, I'd wait till they're ready. I mean, they'll let us know. They think I get some of their figures and stuff together.
Sounds good.
I'll just, sorry, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Craig, your next.
Just a couple of things. Did have a early child, I guess the twenty eight E board for the imagination station. Last week after our supervisor meeting, and one thing that we did do, and just to make you guys all aware, that we did serve notice to. Children's Imagination Station and to Head Start, that our original lease agreement with them, I think, was dated two thousand eleven, so we haven't done anything for thirteen years. And we all know what inflation has done this year, so if you imagine what's happened over thirteen years, and we just need to raise the rent on everybody. And so we have initially raised the rent five hundred dollars per entity, um, per month. And we, over the next five years, we plan to continue to raise it one hundred dollars per year, um, over the next five years, okay.
Do you know how much it is right now that, uh, imagination station pays?
I can get that to you.
I'm just curious what that five hundred.
It should be able to sustain its own maintenance.
It should, that's the whole thing, it's all those costs have gone up dramatically, and they all recognize that, I mean, the Children's Imagination Station and Head Start recognize that.
I remember paying for all the locks and then the refrigerators and stuff when they went down, and we were wondering where that money, you know, we had reserved money, but it was eating that up, and so that's good, good, good on you guys.
Yep, we did, uh, mini blinds and flooring.
Right, and they're looking at. Doing it, an additional flooring and painting and upkeep.
Lot of wear and tear on those floors, so, um, just.
And I will say too, that last Wednesday then morning, I, I did take a tour with Danny Segabard, who heads up the Head Start with, uh. West Central Community Action, and then Wendy Wheeler, who is the head of West Central Community Action, we toured the annex building. Um, looking at a different Head Start facility, and I didn't think that would work, but I wanted to at least show them that that was an option, and then we did take a tour of a. Of our Savior Lutheran Church, um, our Savior, we used to have a preschool there, and we kinda have the room is still there, and they liked it, um. They thought it would work for ten kids, they currently have sixteen kids in the program, but they thought it would work for ten. So I went ahead and I talked to the pastor and president of the congregation, and it is on their council agenda, April. For them to decide what something they wanna do or not. It's not really empty, it's, it uses, it's used on occasion, maybe a confirmation class, Sunday school class, and, uh. Head Start would like to kinda have it exclusive, that, meaning that if we're gonna write up from you. We wanna be able to leave that space as it is and not have you guys use it, you know, move things around, change it, and so the churches are aware of that. And, you know, Head Start said, hey, we understand that, maybe a deal breaker, maybe, but, uh. Our saviors, if you've never been there, there's quite a bit of space that isn't used, you know, um, so they could move things around and make it work if they would say choose, so we'll see. So. And Friday, I guess I've gone to Sioux City, got the third, um, judicial district department corrections meeting. Friday.
That one's only a couple times a year.
It just meets court, we decide to meet three times a year.
Three times a year.
Craig, is there any more talk about Wesco, I don't know, housing, the situation of. You know, you mentioned they wanna change, how many resident homes and.
Well, I mean. With my source. Is that, it's been said that the governor is not gonna go along with anything that the federal government wants to do, she would have to sign off on it, so they, I, unless it would come to. A lawsuit or the federal government perhaps withholding Medicaid payments to make you do that, it hasn't gotten to that point, so. You know, long term, I guess what they said is, um, that's why when, um, Wesco's looking at building, a new building. They're designing it for five people, knowing full well that we might have to do four. So it will handle five, but, um, it'll work for four also.
Is there any talk of withholding funds, I mean, is that?
There's that, that is not.
Okay, alright, not the threat out there, so.
It's just that, that's.
The administrator and the person working can handle four and can't five, I mean.
Well, I think their objective is to punish, uh, the Glenwood facility initially, and then.
Group punishment.
And then, right, if we're, why not stop at punishing Glenwood, but we can punish the whole state of Iowa. That's the way I understand it.
Well, unlike you explained before, those are families that are in those, uh, forties and who, who has to leave after they bonded and they each have their own tasks and their jobs, and they're, they're like family. You, you have to go to this new site and, uh. These people are.
I mean, I've never, ever heard any complaints in our system, have you, I mean, to me, it sounds like it's one of the premier in the country, I mean.
Continuation, I mean, of group punishment, I mean, we've been blessed with that a lot here in the last year, unfortunately, just through everything.
Through everything, yeah.
It's just the federal government run them up, I mean, they just wanna stick their nose in things.
They have nothing else to do? So you got your changes made and everything's good? They had no problem with that? Alright, very good. Alrighty, uh, I will speak just a moment while waiting for Paul about, uh, I had a public health meeting. Was that just last week, and then we got together on Friday to, uh, look at the work that needs to be done over at the, uh. Formerly known as city center, Terry was there, uh, to kinda go through with us, um. We have, uh, Luis, Terry, Jay, yeah, and Lynn, am I missing, me and you.
Sue showed up.
Oh, Sue from the upstairs, and kind of what happens with this project is, you know, we went through and identified everything that needed to be done in each room. And it was supposed to be written in concrete, nothing was going to change, and then low and bold, we get over there and a few things are gonna change, nothing real minor. The only thing that was in the basement, where we've agreed that we're going to put our veterans, and Luis is very excited about that space, uh. Lynn said that they wanted to move that, uh, wall with the paneling, that was too deep.
I don't remember the districts, but yeah.
Backwards way.
Towards Louise.
Oh, for their conference.
They, cause they're. They were working on a contract with WIC, uh, because they need a hallway, now this is the first I've heard of this, you know, because we kind of had the flooring gonna come. But that's not gonna happen, that wall has all that water, water going through it, it just doesn't make any sense, and when I spoke. That wall's not moving, cause when I talked to him, he said that's where they were gonna put the, that was gonna be deserved.
Why did they need a hallway?
Because, uh, WIC is very interested in that space now, they would pay seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to use that space four times a month. Uh, but they need these partitions, because they need offices, they want four offices, and they can't be having, you know, somebody to walk through the space, so they wanted. To have a wall, or a hallway in these, these spaces, and they were measured.
We lose.
So let's say WIC is not WIC, WIC is new opportunities that does the WIC service.
Okay, let's change it to that.
They're out of Carroll. And we don't necessarily have a contract with them.
Not yet.
And if they don't get their hallway, they aren't interested in the space anymore.
Well, originally.
How many funds do we need to spend to accommodate that?
Part of it, and then.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, we're, we're, it's all kind of. And I don't wanna say used to us, but it's just another little twist in when we thought we had it down to what we're doing.
Change order seven hundred and thirty.
Pretty much, pretty much, but Luis, you know, they're gonna move that wall, which we're not, was not going to then entertain having the veterans be there. It could still be doable if you, cause the, the purpose of having that room is for Zoom meetings, and it's multipurpose, you know, if you're only gonna be there. Once a week, it, it doesn't make sense to config that whole basement, it can't be used because, you know, we had talked about mental health, having a place in public and, uh. D H S, uh, having a space, so that, we talked about the movable walls, just the partitions, which will work, uh, and I don't know why we couldn't. Put those facing that, and then the hallway be down on the side where the windows are, to me, that may, you know, it's, it's temporary, so. Kinda working through all of that, uh, but we do have a, uh, someone to come in and do the cleaning and the painting and repairing, uh, they're gonna kinda get started, uh, our public health board approved that.
How big's that hallway got to be though, to be eighty eight compliant?
Minimum, thirty six, probably forty two inches, so, you know, building code.
I don't know, uh, they got, so that does put a little, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it's just the way that that.
I don't wanna short.
Well, sometimes.
That's a seventy five hundred dollar expense, if not more, to move all of that down, you know, then, you know, the studs, cause we were just planning on putting the drywall right on the same studs that are there and just making it simple. So, um.
So do we get, did you get in a conversation about whatever funds they have available, I don't care if it's ten dollars or if it's, uh, whatever it is. They're all the same funds, they're all taxpayer funds. Jakes room. Who's gonna pay what and just get it done.
Keep Jake's move, moving, because that is them, is those, getting that one done. I even, you know, he's wanting that room that's the cinder blocks, if we moved to that little hallway, you know, because right now, public health's, uh, computer is on a. Baker shelf, you know, and there's no special air conditioning in there, there's not, it's just in a space. So what we were trying to get to is why all of a sudden we have to have this, this room, you know, we call it the Taj Mahal, but he says it's not even close to that, it's, it's an escort, what we're doing. You know, we have to have that mini splitter, we have to move the water, we have to have this, uh, special, uh, news box for him, uh. We just feel like that room itself is taking a third of the budget, that room.
The most thing we have to propose to ourselves is do we feel comfortable as a board putting our, the taxpayers' equipment in an escort? Or do we have to have the Cadillac?
Well.
I think our passengers would say the escort probably is fine.
I think, you know.
That'd be my guess.
Having, you know, that, uh, well, not, no, okay, I don't, I just wanna get it done, I just wanna get it done, I. Cotton has been down there, but he had to wait for the board to approve the sinks that wanted to be moved, just because we had agreed, I think that the thing was to make sure. Everybody agreed that, and even after we've been through there the first time, now one more sink is staying that was gonna go in my original, uh, plan, so. Uh, the paint colors have been chosen, we have all of the offices identified, the, uh, painting will be getting started, the, it's, it's gonna happen, like. I wouldn't be surprised if some is already started, so, we, now we're, the upstairs is all ready to get moved into. The basement and Jake's room is where we're kind of at the, uh, you know, cause we already have all of our surveillance.
The longer we talk about it, the more work our contractors out there are getting, the longer it kicks the can down.
Let's get it done, you and I'll get together and get the R and P ready for the basement, uh, and let's just get that out there, hopefully maybe this week, have that all written down and the bits out there and, and keep it moving, so. It's gonna be bad.
Hot shots, if you'd like me to bring them.
Uh, they did get some hospice money, um, for some equip for, for some furniture in the hospice area from the hospice foundation, so those things all come together. Uh, I think it's moving along personally, I feel it, so, we've made it over the hump possibly, because we're not moving the wall, and, uh, we'll make that work.
Let's get it done before somebody changes their mind.
Let's do it, I got it written.
All the problems that have been at this table, it's, gotta get somebody to do it.
It's, it's been a challenge, because it's not a big enough project, you know, the comment was made, well, if we just had hired somebody to oversee it, I said, well, if we're gonna hire someone to oversee it, let's just make the. Changes that we think we need, cause that's not gonna be cheap, because if you remember.
All that stuff we can't get done that we're hiring.
Yeah, we have somebody that's supposed to be telling somebody what they're gonna do and they disagree, we're not any further along, so I, I don't agree with that statement, that we would be further along, personally.
I think we would hire somebody overseeing it, we've just been logged down, there's additional expenses or change orders.
Right, right.
And we kinda already had the, we have, we've had our example.
Yes, so I think, uh. I guess my good news is it's moving along, and there is some interest again in the annex, I had a call from somebody wondering what we're gonna be doing with that, and I said, it's moving along. Uh, they weren't in a big hurry, so that's the good thing, they've got something that's gonna kinda be starting, uh, we kinda wish now that, uh. This public health would have just bought the building right next door for a dollar, remember that building was for sale, the one right next door with C D C, that was a dollar, we could do right next door and, uh.
Is it still for sale?
Maybe it was an oversight by somebody to not snag it after the building, but, um, but yeah, we went through their budget, uh, and it, I can pass it around, um. Their, their change from twenty three to twenty four, it's, they were asking twenty, or ninety three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars less than they asked last year. That the next, should we move past Paul's and go to that?
Gene, you, you asked the question, but Children's Imagination Station pays twenty one oh one a month, Head Start pays thirteen seventy seven a month. And the reason why it's kinda odd numbers is just because, uh, they all get charged the same per square foot, one has a bigger space than the other ones.
Five hundred will be broke down into.
Five hundred will not be, it's just a flat.
So do you anticipate that, oh, think that's too much?
They both agree.
They both agree, okay, alright, so I know that the rates for the imagination station have gone.
They probably get figured out that they've been hooked pretty well.
Just recently, the rail or imagination station have gone up so much that, uh, their young families that have had to find out, specifically cannot afford it.
Those are expensive.
I know, that's, that's why my grandparent duty has moved up a notch. It's the option.
Grandmas can't raise their legs.
No, but they just have to send the laundry, remind themselves to go pick people up.
You got a ten o'clock? We're gonna do, you know. I was gonna do, we got this timber pile drill that we're gonna do as a little demos, demo, well, we'll see how it goes here, okay, if we have time. And maybe everybody like to see that, even the people coming to bid on the farm. We got a lot of bridges with, with timber piling, and this is just a really, it's a scientific way, I think, I think one, one comes about over here. They probably do, I don't know if they have that capability or not, but anyhow, uh, I've got a number of utility permits at that time of the year, with Killa's doing a bunch, um. This Terry Biker just wants to run a garden hose from one side of the road to the other, he's gonna put a four inch pipe, plastic pipe, sleeve, just board under there, so I don't have a problem with that, you know. That way you can use as well, and this is the example of a private, you know, pretty, pretty benign, so. Uh, the bridge replacement, no new news on that, they had to cut the trees before April first in order to comply with some of the environmental regulations, so those are down. Um, the, uh, uh, shop, uh, most of the building's done, uh, they're working on insulation of the doors. Uh, they're working on insulation of the doors and, uh, some indoor rough ends, getting ready for the concrete. And I'm getting prices to do the concrete out front too. Uh, we're just going to try to do everything.
Yeah.
If we can and be done with it.
So it'll be nice.
It'd be like the house cities, you know, where we connected it right to the street and it's just nice and clean. Uh, the, uh, grade crew, uh, they were working up on each avenue, finished everything up down on T. Uh, bridge crew actually kind of went and worked on that structural plate, still in basin first, and then go to Rocky Run and work on the bridge. So, um, engineering services agreement, this is for the trust bridges. So there's eight in twenty-twenty-four and five, no, six, excuse me. So we're kind of slowly getting that number down. Um, you know, to, uh, uh, less bridge, but it's still, it's like seven hundred dollars a piece. To have them inspect those every two years. And so there's been a lot of changes in bridge inspection, data collection. And this is something I was going to talk about too, but I don't know if we'll take the time today to talk about all of that. Uh, but we might do the bridge demo or the bridge pile drill demo. So, um, this is a two-year contract with them to do the bridge inspections, uh, for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. And then, you know, if there's things other than the inspection that they have to do, load ratings, any of that stuff, that's addition services. So.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four. Sorry. All right. Any further discussion? That'll call the motion. All favor, I.
I.
Any opposed? Same sign. Chair votes aye. That's been approved.
Okay, then the next item is the DOT budget and five-year program. We've talked about these, uh, the budget's the exact same budget as budget. It just has to be built down definitely for the DOT. Anybody wants a copy? More than happy to make it for you. Um, but it's the exact same numbers. So, um, so that's what the budget is, the program. Uh, you know, we talked about, you know, so really for you guys to kind of consider is paving projects, you know, where do we go? Uh, you know, last week we talked about this all being done at the same time. I kind of still think that's probably not a bad idea, okay? To take care of what we have. I'd love to get this paved over here. This pushes that out to twenty-twenty-eight. Based on my, kind of my analysis of the funds that we have available. So, um, you guys tell me if you want to change. I, we'll have to approve this next week because I have to get the budget program in. But we've talked about this a number of different times, but that's kind of where the program lands today, okay? And, uh, I was able to talk to Chris over at Region Twelve. We've got another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars added to this project. So we'd be getting two million dollars in, um, what's the regional, you know, it's called the Regional Service Transportation Program funding. Uh, we had applied for one point seven five, but it was to bump, bump that up. And understand, you know, once we, you know, we get the extra money, it just delays when our next application goes in, okay? You know, you have that pot of money and, and, you know, we try to stay not borrowed ahead. We're going to be borrowed. If we do all of this, we're, we're going to be borrowed ahead to the max and everything on our pavements and our bridges, which is okay. Because it'll never.
People now will be in four years.
That's, that's always been our philosophy, okay? It'll never be less, you know, less expensive than it is today, generally speaking. So that's what's in the program, okay? And, um, as far as bridges go, uh, we've got the bridge south of Vale, uh, that would be let in January twenty-twenty-five, hopefully. Uh, the bridge over Donna Reed, which would be let in the fall of twenty-twenty-five. I've still got the bridge on the county line with Madonna County that would be local money that comes out of our local pot. So that could change depending on how important that is. And then the next contract bridge would be, uh, south of Vale on the curve. There's that, that.
Right.
Bridge by Mark Schweres. You know, and then, uh, then the latest, the last one in the program would be the tube by Buck Grove. Now, you know, understand, these bridges aren't terrible. I mean, they're not to the point, you know, where there's a crisis. But you don't want to get to the point where all of a sudden posting bridges. And so you want to try to stay ahead of the curve a little bit. And these are kind of in that, that area where in the next five to 10 years, they probably are going to fall into that. And so you want to get ahead of it before it becomes a problem. So that's kind of what I have for bridges. And then there's a whole bunch of day labor projects that are in there too. So, um, if you want to talk some more about it, but, but next Tuesday, I do have to approve the budget and the program and get them submitted. So I've got it here today. It's on the agenda. Uh, you let me know what you want to do.
I don't see a reason for me to have to wait for more of a week when you got it all put together.
Yeah, and, and I know, you know, Ty, I, I, I'm with you. I'd love to do new pavement. But in the same token, you have to take care of what you have that is existing. And I think it just makes sense. I wish we'd have gotten the SS four A grant. The news is, you know, we don't have the, the fatalities, bad news is, we don't have the fatalities.
I, I just want to get to where we get to twenty-eight for that three-mile stretch and well, now let's bump it again and bump again.
Potential to have different leadership at that point and how will they feel? I'd hate to see them people keep getting.
Yeah.
Get down the road, but I also understand what you're saying. You know, you got, you'll have, you'll have the batch plant set up over there and all that stuff, so. And, and that pavement isn't terrible. I mean, you, you can drive around the western Iowa and find a lot worse pavements in L-51 between Charter Oak and Highway Thirty-Seven. Okay, but there's an opportunity here to, to widen it and to make it safer. It's still one of those twenty-foot wide pavements that are narrow and they're, you know, our goal has always been to try to kind of get that improved, so. You know.
It's, I'd take shoulder another day to trust them out of Iowa. I mean, it's close. I mean, it, it, I said it's not bad.
Experience every now and then I feel a drop off when I need another truck or a truck.
Yeah. It's not that it's horrifically unsafe. I, I mean, there's.
Yeah.
Very few accidents that occur. So, I mean.
There's the reason we didn't get that SS four A grant. That's why it isn't horrific. Yeah. And we even went to T, uh, Transportation Safety Improvement Program funds. And they looked at it too and said it's not, you know, so then we had to divert to H-SIP, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program. Funds were, were still eligible for a half million there, but, um, so yes. We're right.
Right.
I mean, I agree with Dave. I mean, if that's, Paul is our resident expert in this area.
He certainly is.
If that's what his recommendation is, I mean, I'd have gotten Paul voting on that today.
Okay, sounds like a motion.
So move.
Seconds.
So what's the motion?
To approve. Item number five, DOT budget for five years.
But it's budgeting a five-year construction program. Okay, I get it.
All right, so motion second. Any more discussion on that? All the questions are answered. Great. All favor, I.
I.
All right.
Any opposed?
I have to stand.
Stand.
I'm going to stand.
Okay.
Because it's in our neighborhood. Yeah, should too.
I all, I use that road every day, so.
I don't use it every day.
I get what you're saying, but honestly, though, all the roads are underneath our curb area. We use it all, so.
That would mean I'd have to, uh, stand from the Donna Reed Bridge.
The same thing, staying from buying White Rock because.
I mean, I approve it. I just don't want to be accused of being, uh, you know, I voted for that because you use it every day. I just want to know that.
I'd be the same way. If we do anything on Donna Reed Road, I'd drive it.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying.
I understand. So if that's your.
Well, you guys understand me. Like, all the years I've been here, there's never been a project I've bought that's been politically motivated.
No, right, no.
No.
I know.
They all, I, I, I've all, you know, sincerely felt that they were probably in the best interest of the overall public of the.
Yep.
Systems. I get it though. I understand your point. That's your choice.
Yep, all right.
Yep.
So do we have a motion of second? Uh, all favor, I would want to say. All right.
Yep.
Motion chair.
Born a favor.
Born a favor, one of them.
All right.
You'll need to sign. Gene.
Have you unvoted yet?
This one, this one.
Did you say that?
Say I know.
We'll just hang out here.
I didn't hear you.
Gene, you'll need to sign that. Uh, there are two seat plots, right?
There's got to be someone out there.
Somebody else. Guys, Gene found a highway fifty.
I don't know where they came from.
Their seat block seat, so they're down at the shop. Well, you would.
I'll hold them hostage there. I know that, I know that.
Well, same thing with Thompson, please.
I was going to take them using for a three-plant, but I better tell you.
Three-mile stretch.
You know, I'm working. I, I might do four acres. We usually get something like the, uh, credits forever. Okay, I know you guys got it. Thank you. Yep. And well, if, if we can, talking about this, putting the weight on your.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gene.
I should think, we're going to, yeah, wait, wait around. We're not leaving five minutes of Jared just. Go over a minimum bid and.
I'm well ready.
Hopefully there's bidders always in there.
Will anybody be bid on their vote?
I'd have to look at it. Okay, I see at least three.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the problem, right? We don't need anybody in. I see at least three. Okay.
I saw the credit, I was probably got. I need to.
I was cheating.
Busy.
Were you kidding me? Oh, that'd be a common, that'd be a common.
I could stake Paul's spot.
What do we need?
Welcome.
Well, well, yeah.
Yep. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Pretty short.
Thank you for civic duty.
All right.
Civic participation.
All right.
There you go.
Need motion to open the public hearing for the land rent auction.
Jared real quick.
Give us a second with Jared for details on auctioning.
I guess, I talked to Dave the other day. I said I have no problem doing it. Um, my biggest question is at the end, a lot of times in an auction scenario, before I start, we'll say, I'm not going to accept a bid less than so much. What did that mean? Five-dollar increments, ten? So give me some parameters and I'll do what I do. But.
We're talking about five.
Then the other thing too is that we, the county is running this farm. Jared is just here solely as a volunteer to auction it off. There's no responsibility on Jared Westover.
Correct. So I don't know, prior to the start, if you guys have some details to, to present.
Yeah.
And then I'll just do my deal then.
Kyle, you're going to do all that because you're the one that's worked this all the way through, so do you want to do it?
No, that's true. We're good, skip. Yeah, no, that's all. Hundred and twenty-eight, one eight acres.
And you'll go through that, yeah, a little bit at least before Jared gets started then.
Okay. We're very good?
I think we're ready to do it.
All right.
Open.
Ready for the public hearing, the.
I'll make the motion to go and do public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all favor, I.
I.
Any opposed? Chair will side, public hearing is now open.
Yeah.
Bidders must be present.
Okay.
Bidders must be present, okay.
You have a. Ben.
Just walking out of curiosity.
All right. All right, come on in. Feel free to come up front if you want to. You guys can come up here to these chairs. Come on up.
There you go.
Now, Philip, run. Come up front.
I don't know. Similar. So I want to make sure you clarify.
We are in our public hearing for the land rent auction for Cocker County Farm. Kyle has been working, uh, right together with Craig. So he's going to give the parameters here of what this auction is about and what we're going to do here. So Kyle.
Okay, I thank everybody for coming today. Uh, we're here to rent off a hundred and twenty-eight point eight acres more or less tillable Cocker County ground. Uh, just some highlights of the lease that, uh, we've been working feverishly to get this rolled into CRP program. And, uh, we have the application filed, but it hasn't been approved. But we're anticipating that it will be approved by signing lease today, also signing termination papers. So we won't have to go through that process in August. Uh, anybody, any, you know, you, do you have a copy of the lease?
I've seen it.
Okay, we had a change today on a, uh, item F, the removal of Stover, said it was not allowed. But we, we restricted that, or we restrict that. And then Stover can be removed, but it has to be removed no later than December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Otherwise, it's just your pretty much standard farm lease. I mean, I, we do have a copy if anybody else wants to see it. And, uh, does same here, five hundred dollars are due today. The balance will be due April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Yeah, that's what was, no, that's what the public noticed.
That's a public, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions in regards to that from anybody? Are we good?
All right, with that.
We're going to have Jared do the auction, so.
So I thank the supervisors for asking me to help out. Um, everybody here's been doing auction before. Um, we just discussed here a little bit ago, when we get down to the end, there'll be no bids accepted under five-dollar increments. Um, yeah, pretty straightforward. I did get a phone call prior to this meeting. I've got an opening bid of three hundred dollars. And now quarter, a three hundred dollar now quarter, a three hundred. Three hundred now quarter, three hundred now quarter, three hundred now quarter, three hundred now ten, a 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 three hundred now ten. I tell you what, guys, these guys asked me to do this and I'm not going to be here all day, but I do have a hard bid. Three hundred now ten, three hundred now ten, a 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 three hundred now ten. And, uh, we're, we're going to auction off the rent.
Go hard for maybe.
What's that cost?
Don't worry. I mean, the rains come back.
Yeah.
Rain a little bit yesterday. Kind of about half.
Better than nothing. Okay, guys, if anybody needs any more time, let me know. But I do have three hundred dollars, hard money. Three hundred now ten, a 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 three now ten, three ten, twenty, a three ten, twenty, a three ten now. Three ten now twenty-three, ten now twenty. Three ten now twenty, three ten twenty, ten twenty, a three ten now twenty, three ten fifteen, a ten now fifteen, three ten now fifteen, three ten fifteen, a ten now fifteen, three ten now fifteen, twenty, a three fifteen twenty, a three fifteen. Three twenty, three twenty-five, a twenty-five thirty, a twenty-five. Thirty-three, twenty-five and three thirty, a twenty-five now thirty. Anybody else? Three twenty-five, three thirty now five, a three thirty now five, a three hundred now thirty, a three thirty now five, three thirty-five, three forty, a three thirty-five forty, a three thirty-five now. I tell you what, I'm going to take one more thirty-second break. We've got three hundred and thirty-five dollars bid. Give everybody their fair share of time and after the break, I will sell it. Three hundred and thirty-five and we're going to go. I got three thirty-five, three forty, three thirty-five, forty. Give everybody equal time. Three thirty-five, forty, a thirty-five, forty, a thirty-five. Thirty-five and three forty, thirty, thirty-five and forty, a thirty-five. Thirty-five and forty, three forty, three forty-five, a forty-five, fifty, a three forty. Three forty-five and three fifty, forty-five, fifty, a forty-five. Forty-five now fifty, three fifty, three fifty-five, three sixty, a fifty-five and sixty, a three fifty-five and sixty, three fifty-five and sixty. Are you sure? Three fifty-five, three sixty. Look me in the eye, tell me yes or no. Three fifty-five, three sixty. Over here, three fifty-five and sixty. Anybody else? Three fifty-five and three sixty. Sold it. Three hundred and fifty-five dollars. You don't get it?
I don't know who gives it, yes, like.
We'll let you sort that out later. Okay.
Well, thank you, everybody, for showing up.
Everybody for bidding.
Yeah. Thank you, Jared.
Coming back.
Thank you, Jared, for auctioning. Very nice before you leave.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Give me the five hundred now.
I know, you're lucky.
All right.
That's the best deal of the day. Yeah, yeah, fill back up with water.
You got a tank. Five hundred, I guess.
You know, five hundreds, Ken. You'll drink that.
We already discussed that.
I know where you guys are.
Hey, thanks, Jared. I'm just.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the.
And my goal is chopping, so if you get it in, you probably can uh.
Oh, you're planning chopping?
Chop, no, moisture corn, so if you get done early enough, you guys probably get seeded early enough this fall.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. My signature won't be good.
It won't.
All right.
That'll be close to your pile then, huh?
Yeah, I'll give my other bottom a rest once.
Take it in the office and get your receipt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You guys.
The land auction is over. We need a motion to go out of the public hearing.
We're gonna close public hearing. Second.
All right, I'll have more discussion, all in favor. All right. All right, we are now out of the public hearing. Uh, next on our.
Let's pick up Paul quick here.
Oh, Paul, come on back up, sorry.
They've got the visual.
Oh, yeah.
We're just doing it back here, but anyhow, uh, the local transportation program is held up. They have this drill that it's a, it's a small bed, about sixteen inch diameter.
Is it safe to come closer?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not lethal, but anyhow.
It looks like one.
I mean, prior to this, you know, as we go out and do our bridge inspections, which all bridges have to be inspected every two years, some of them actually every twelve months. But uh, when you're out there and there are timber piling underneath of the number of our bridges. And the ones that we're most concerned about, this would be kind of that next wave of bridges, are the ones that have a concrete deck. Okay, everything's concrete above, but they're sitting on timber piling. That was a standard that was used in Iowa, all across the state, there are hundreds and hundreds of bridges like this that were built in the fifties. Concrete sitting on timber piling, once timber piling are decaying, the concrete deck is great shape. And so we've gone in and we put steel H piling on the above, so kind of supplement that. Uh, but you know, the only way we had to really check to see what the piles like is a hammer, you know, break this, listen to it, hear the sound, we're trying to see. Well, so we're gonna do Casey is, is out drilling these to give us a really good baseline. So we thought it'd be kind of interesting for you to see a demo of it. And essentially, what we get then is uh, is a report. It looks at, you know, reach piling. So you know, this is the start of the piling, going through the piling, we'll get it centered, of course, that red yellow is not good, it basically doesn't bear allow. And then you get back until the eyes, you know, so the, the piling tend to decay from the middle. And the reason is that the, 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 that creosote doesn't penetrate far enough in, you know, so you've got this right here, so you've got creosote that, you know, comes in. And it doesn't get into there, and so that's more vulnerable to decay than the exterior. And so, you know, so as he goes through with this thing here, it picks up that, you know. Right here, you know, that's what you're looking at, is piling, you know, going through. And so you get good, bad, good, you know, less. And it's giving us a report of how much decay, you know, the decay here, this one's got forty nine percent of the pile area is, is basically has no capacity. So it's really good.
What level did you get to to make it a replacement?
With, well, yeah, because you know, you could have like, you know, we were having a report this morning, you know, the cluster, and it's a good example of what we see, you got the list. You know, you got six piling here. And here you have, you know, good, 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 here there's only twenty seven percent lower. Here there is uh, fifty four percent, you know, and this one here was like forty three percent based on this. And so, yeah, so you know, here we got, you know, we're gonna have to rate that and determine whether we need to post it or not. So it gives us some really good information. We were, there's no other.
Do one sample or do you do multiple samples within a trust of the.
It, it kind of depends. I always try to go for the, the weakest link in it. Because I mean, that's where the capacity is, a lot of times, it's right at the ground level. Sometimes we have like a wood cap, if you feel up in there, you can actually feel a hollowing area, you know, from the top, but most of the time it's from the bottom. Or if I have, they've got big tiebacks during a cable that go back in the ground, sometimes you'll see a crushing. There, so that's a good spot to.
Okay, gotta go through and see some bad spots right there.
Yeah, I just assumed it was all like that. The initial, but I've never even thought about on a wood cap, I, like I said.
Paul, I got a question, like, I know this is a mostly data collection, but like, when you're trimming that there, that kind of shows you what side of the bridge might have been. I mean, does it necessarily tell you where the environment or the climate was actually affecting those three pillars more?
Well.
Or, or is it maybe they weren't as good as posts or?
Yeah, that, that's probably what the case is, is that they either didn't get as good treatment or they uh, you know, it's just the irregular nature of organic products, you know? Timber products aren't all the same.
The data is gonna be hard, you know, like build it different or something when you come back.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be really environmental that I could point to because, you know, you got, these are all really good and those three aren't because they probably came maybe a different tree or who knows? How they uh.
Iowa's weather in her environment probably don't help them either with the humidity and the moisture.
A lot of these bridges were built in the fifties, really getting close to seventy years old or, or at seventy years, at least in design, at least were never designed to last that long.
And you got trees that don't that long.
You know, so uh.
No good.
You know, what we've been doing with a lot of those, we've been going in and driving four steel H piling to the abutment right, right up front, you know, right up front here. You're coming in to be, you know, your, your bridge was set up here, so we'll come in and put H piling in here and then build the gap, you know, to support it. Uh, you know, because this bridge is in great shape, other than, other than it's riling it a little bit up. Uh, so anyhow, I'll, we'll just do a demo and kind of show you that, you know, we're, we're out, kind of gathering, there's not, you know, we talked to Kellin Burns. Uh, they just do a smattering of it, we're gonna do all of them just to get a big slime, you know?
That was probably a lot more cost effective though, coming out of the wartime, you're still in Korea there, so the steel was probably expensive and then wood piling were, yeah, that makes sense.
They were very cost effective, bridges that lasted for seventy years. Can't, you can't argue with the design, it's just that now we've got about, you know, close to twenty of these type of bridges that, you know, we're gonna have to start picking off every so often. Because the back walls extracted decay too. And then, you know, once they start to go, then you stand like, well, let's just get rid of this bridge, we'll be able to remove the rest to our expert. So uh, so yeah, wanna see a demo here, uh. Somebody's gotta stand on top of that, size, you wanna do that?
I, I actually did a test core on it, and this is, and this is the report on it. And this is right, on this particular one, yeah.
Well, that's kind of cool.
And it shows you get through this core wood, that might be the split or the core wood, either one. But uh, it didn't really show any. In the cave. But uh, I say. Yeah, I just want to push against that, like I said, that's the grilled bits inside there.
Flashed in laps, you can say to them.
They lost, they didn't find, but he just wanted to talk, that's it, right there.
Oh, I'm a realtor, I break big bits.
I felt the same damn bad.
I break bits like it's my job.
But as this, this goes through, it will show you the, the distance in, once I get it started. And uh, it shows the graph, the resistance against that. And it goes out the end.
I can't read how.
But that's all the, I told the whole of me. But it'll give you one in the field and you can kind of look in the field. And then it gives you more detailed one, you can download it. And then you've got a definite number.
A one to five. Basically, that's what I would.
I've done.
That probably is right at the center, might be this little crash right here. This is when, this is, this is gone here, I mean, see, the treatment and penetration, so this, you know, and this is what we have, is they look, it's really good. You know, it's like somebody looks good, but they're all full, you know? This is what's happening, is the interior is, is decayed, so it's just more of a scientific way of, of analyzing.
Oh, I didn't think it's the interior, not the exterior.
This is true, this is true, so that's not.
It just doesn't reach the center.
Right, the, the penetration does, we see, you know, see this, they're pushing, they're, they're trying to push the creosote into it, you can see here where, you know, comes in, because it just doesn't get all the way in, so. I would say, how was this right here? You say this is. This is, I, I don't know where Tim got this one from, it's probably a sixty year old pilot, you know? Came up.
Well, we're learning.
Yeah, so they, they are amazing, you know, that's why some of them, you know, this bridge did, uh, we did the whole inspection, you know what I mean? Most of those piling are still in good shape, it's those three there that are bad. See, see how you got, everything else is good. Seven three pile, I don't know how bad they are, you know?
How to get you a number?
So.
What board it is, this is four eighty one. And then I, well, have you seen that cover sheet that I had, file survey, I've got that and I just identified this is four eighty one, eighty two, eighty three. And then the location, upper down the ground level.
So the, the whole bridge inspection, uh, methodology is changing dramatically, they, they. Well, not, not really, it's just data collection, this is something that we go on to do. And you, you bought just, they all have the same guy that did the presentation last week, they, they, we can use that as long as we want. But uh, we'll have it here until we get done with these. But the bridge inspection, uh, you know, they've changed the guidelines, so now they're requiring a lot more data. So there's gonna be seventy two new data entries for every bridge we have put in, and beyond those, there's more data entries. So bridge inspection's gotten a lot more complicated. It doesn't make bridges any safer, it doesn't, you know, it's, what the additional information is data. Data, it doesn't have anything to do with the condition, this piling, or anything related to safety of the bridge, which is really frustrating. We have to collect this, and so I think at least there has to be at least another three to four hours per bridge to get all of that in over the next several years. So it's basically working on a lot of that this year for all of our bridges, trying to get all the data points, get that added to our inspection reports, but anyhow. So yeah, so we do a little.
Will we replace the wood piling with a steel piler?
You can't replace them, they're not there, we just put a new one sit next to them. So like here, you know, this will be a timber piling, right? So the bridge on top, but we'll come in and we'll, we'll build a gap here. Okay, and uh, and we'll, we'll drive each other in here, so. Okay. So that's, that's how we're dealing with that. So this will, this will push that bridge down.
Is that something else?
I don't know. There's someone.
And they slide it in.
You know?
It's rest of it.
Concrete's put up eight layers. All, all this, it's all steel.
And also, you know, we have this.
And we'll use it every day. This is the problem, everybody's standing out there, not worth staying.
Very interesting. Be careful of stuffing on it, huh?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
That's interesting.
Yeah, that was.
Have you ever done one of them, where you cut the gas to do that?
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen that done, Jared, so you're welcome.
Safety election last week, thank you, uh, and that, that, that went over really, really well.
Safety meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and uh, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, next we have discussion, take actions, Corey Snowbrun, Dennis and Fire Team, storm warning sirens. Come on, Paul.
Yeah, thanks for waiting.
Got to see a little demo, so it's.
Yeah, I would have. That bit wouldn't last.
Somehow. Last for them.
Not me.
Had to take out a future.
Don't matter.
And.
There we go.
Come on to me, we're good.
Got one thing to appreciate it.
All right, I come here today, um, to sit down with you guys about a, a mutual concern. Obviously, as citizens. The front page of, yeah. Red letters on top.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The front page there is our current storm warning siren locations and the coverage it provides.
Um, that would be in, in the yellow?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the yellow uh, is your eighty decibels and then the green outline around that is the seventy. So we have one, um, top of the courthouse, uh, one down by Vanwall, one up. Uh, Ridge and Twentieth, East Broadway. Uh, City View and out, uh, by Chamber. As far as the fire department goes, we, we kind of looked at this, um, this was produced uh, in twenty twelve. We replaced, I think we were on council then, still, remember when we did all the storm warning sirens?
Remember a little bit about it, not exactly what it did.
Okay. We did all those in twenty twelve. And we have a, a. A glaring gap there in terms of uh, risk, specific population, and that would be uh, Yellow Smoke. So our, our next move is we wanted to get one out there. If you go to page two. This is a much more updated software program. And it shows you. The location at Yellow Smoke where we proposed it and the coverage that it provides there.
Of my killer.
Yeah, we've got it up, uh, right by the nature center. There's a power source there for us, so, uh, and the siren that we selected back then and, and. Uh, we want to stay with is the two thousand one. And the nutshell's allowed us one they make and it rotates. It's powered, uh, it's an electric siren. And all of them, we had included a battery backup. Uh, I think, I don't remember, there's two or four big interstate batteries that uh, are planned to be, have some power to help.
So the one at Yellow Smoke is currently there?
No, that's.
This is the, this is the projection.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep.
Do they have to be, how do they sync all together so when you just click one button, they all turn on?
Yeah, it's all, all with the controllers, it's all done from the comm center.
Okay, okay.
Actually, we can do it from our radios too. I didn't buy that event until it showed that. Um, after that is the current quote. It's got twenty eight, six highlighted. By the time that we were done going through the options on it, it came to twenty nine, twenty nine, that's a change. I didn't write that down.
So the total project is twenty thousand, six forty three oh six.
Mm-hmm. And then it.
We've got some add-ons, is that?
Yeah, it, it pushed it just, just above twenty nine thousand.
Traffic control, if required, we should make that.
Yes, yeah, see, there was options there, I had them, um, include some of the options so that we had the ability to kind of pick and choose what we wanted. If you go up on that quote, top right corner in the box, uh, this date quoted was September twenty ninth last year. Uh, he is going to hold this price for me for this siren. We've identified a second and a potentially third siren, um, that we need. And those would get, uh, those would run a few thousand there than, than what you're seeing here. Same siren, it's updated price. Um, and it's basically a turnkey installation. Uh, they will send a team here, um, they'll ship the siren and the pole here, uh, and then their team comes and, and does the. They'll ship the siren in the pole here and then their team comes and does the install for us. The only thing we have to do is supply power to the location. So if you go to the next page, there's a picture. This is the. This is the power up at the nature center that they have right now. And wanting to keep things, everything above board and being good graces, especially with a emergency warning device. We had the state electors, expect to come and tell us. Essentially what we could and what we couldn't do. And I had Jerry Bryan along with that because I was asking him. Basically to give me a cost analysis of what it would take. And then his estimate is there behind that. Yeah. And the four thousand is. That's high for what we needed for. However, with the state inspector looking at this. Jerry's quote is what will not only provide power to the location, to the siren, but also bring this into code compliance.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's, that's where Jerry's estimate. Came from. And that's even with me helping him dig. Or should I say my son?
All right.
You better contact Conservation Board about it.
Yes, yes.
Media, they did mention this is. A project that being worked on.
Right.
As our auditor can attest, storms do hit out there.
Just thank you.
No warning.
Were you out there when they got pulled over for you?
Art got picked up and sat back down.
Yeah, there's a few of them.
Yeah.
Identify by, I guess you and what you do, or was that some other buddies? Some other inspector come in and say, hey?
No.
No, okay.
No, no, this, this, this is all come from in-house.
Okay.
The, the challenge for me is. We put funds in the budget to do a siren this fiscal. The challenge is, is that it's outside of city limits. We. But it's our first response area. You understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes. So that's what I mean by we have a mutual concern here.
Correct. And there's some new housing going on in that area that's going to make it more of a concern. I think there's some condos going in and in the east side of that.
Yep.
I would go up to Yellow Smoke.
That encompasses that.
So it keeps expanding that way.
If you look at the most recent acoustic model, there was page two. It's not a stretch to look out down a Reed Road or South Main Loop. And know that we need something out there too.
Yep.
The other location, the other location we were looking at is there on North Ten Street, right before the gravel. Yeah. Because since we did this initial round of sirens, we've added that apartment complex or hillside, I think.
I can see even up there on.
Well, then there's that.
I mean, I live right there and I can, I can hear it from my house. I mean, I live right there down the street.
Didn't hear it.
I can hear it. Holy God. Everybody else can. You can hear it a lot of why. You can hear it.
So I, no, makes perfect sense. I'm glad if somebody had identified that, I guess I would have.
Um, I mean.
Actually, they all go out and test the decibels when you get the sirens going, when you're doing like your tests and stuff?
Federal, federal signal provides the acoustic model. Uh, which takes into account, and this is the, the last two pages. There they show your elevation and everything, the brand of the siren or the model, the elevation, the whole nine yards. That's, that's what their software produces the.
Well, excellent. I wondered how you found that. I mean, because you know, they got the little penitentials and all kinds of stuff.
Right. Well, and, and that's a challenge for us, you know, the elevations, the hills. You know, it's, it's a challenge.
Yep. We're not blessed with a flat geography.
It won't be, right? So I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for, or. We obviously have a, a mutual interest that is included in, in this particular project for Yellow Smoke, but also. And some of the, the other locations. We've identified a hazard mitigation grant for a second siren. And I've talked with Greg about it. I hated to because the last thing he needs to be worried about right now is us and what goes on here. But, um, he was, he was okay if, if we wanted to go after that. So. Hope that's, we kind of have that on our radar for siren number two.
So it would be twenty-nine plus that four, twenty-nine something.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we, like I said, we put it in the budget. We have the ability to do it. If, if, you know, if a cost share or something doesn't evolve from this. And then we've got a plan for the second one, but it's that second one. If that grant falls through. I don't have that in next year's budget.
So this one, we're looking at us splitting it fifty-fifty or we're looking at us?
I like the sound of that.
So when you say us, you're talking about Denison FD.
Yeah. So when, I didn't know if you were counting Greg as the us, you know.
I mean, I think ultimately the fund price should go through emergency management, but still.
Agreed, right?
It's all, it's all taxpayer fund.
Yeah. And, and we want to be part of the solution too, you know?
I mean, though, if we do a fifty-fifty with, and then this other one, was that, where, where's your other one? I mean, is that on the county too when you're talking number two?
Yeah, it would be out either South Main Loop, South Donna Reed area or up.
So if we went fifty-fifty of both of you, then that helps you sustain your budget next year as well for number two.
But you said your potential for a grant on the second one.
Yes.
What's the potential if the grant didn't come through?
Right.
That grant paper all of it or is it a partial grant?
Five percent.
Five?
There's five percent max.
Oh.
It's a free, yeah. Which is five percent of thirty grand or whatever.
Right.
Really helps.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah.
That's all we'd have to pay, right?
Yeah. I mean, it'd be great if we get that, but.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Do you want to commit to? The safety of our citizens?
Yep.
That we won't participate if we don't get the grant?
No.
I think it's probably important to.
You know, I remember when we had the hailstorm last summer, last summer, wasn't it?
April seventeenth.
I, I just standing out there at the golf court, you know, last April. Good point.
It does seem like a long time ago.
But if we did that. I remember when I was standing out there, I mean, the, the sirens weren't as loud out there. I mean, that's so. Yeah. We do need better coverage to the west or the east out there. Yeah.
But you got it in for this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year.
This year. So you start construction right away on it.
After our council meeting tonight, I would call him and pull the trigger on this one.
Be up in time for campus.
Six to eight weeks. That's what he, that's what he tells me.
It's busy. Because it certainly doesn't take that long on this location to put one up.
Right. There, the, um, it's a single source, sole source purchase. They're the only vendor in the region that can sell federal sirens. And he's based down in the city.
Okay.
So that's where they've got to go.
Gotcha.
What do you need from us? What do you consider for us?
Well, I guess I, if we do something with this or we decided to cross share. AMA is probably the right place to come from.
Greg's.
Greg's. We're gonna have to. Well.
Otherwise we're dipping into top, the funds that are already. Deducted elsewhere.
For our standpoint, making sure that we.
Yeah.
How we end it.
Maybe short term with sixteen-five. Which. You know, there should be money somewhere.
I would think so.
I would think so.
And how we get to that point, I, I mean, it's. We'll probably have opportunity for another budget amendment to be doing out at the end of the year. Unfortunately, hopefully.
I don't know about that.
We always got to do the hickams.
We're in April.
At the end of the year.
That's not a budget amendment though. That's a trick. That's why I'm asking because we don't have the funds available. I know, I don't know. Because it's not my budget.
But we have a budget amendment already proposed and I think we've already set it out for last, so we can't get it on.
No.
That's all.
Right. But it's not a large dollar amount.
No, I think we can. It might work.
You know.
Budget's probably got some flexibility in it as far as sixteen thousand.
It's just as simple as a one payment and stuff like this, radio equipment, I quickly coming in.
So how do we want to handle this? What do you?
And I just, and I only ask because I just don't want to get into a bind.
Correct.
Do not have the, you know, the funds necessary to power stuff through the summer here.
Or another option.
All right.
For being. Just let us do this one. You guys grab the second one. That would give you more time for a.
Are the wishes important?
Yeah.
In theory, that sounds quite better to me. I mean, it's just.
That seems adequate, right?
Yeah.
Well, we're not saying no. Nice to split it, but.
Yes.
Without having a budget.
When we know the price of the second one, though, that'd be the other thing is it's probably going to be more expensive than this one.
Yeah, I would, I would, to be safe, I would add six percent onto the current price. And you're probably the mauler. But the install.
Save some of the electricals.
Yeah, the installer, yeah, the bringing the power to the location, I, I doubt would be that much. Because like I said, that, that four thousand there is, is to get us that power, but to also bring this up to code compliance.
I feel that with that, that's county infrastructure there. We should be paying for any upgrades to the conservation with that power. I mean, because that's not, that's how I feel. It shouldn't be the city of Denison.
Outside the city limits, it makes, I, I agree.
Especially with that upgrade in the power.
Well, if you're confident that we have the sixteen-five and interior, we are too. I, I don't see a reason why not to just split both of them then. I just, like I said, I just brought up because I didn't want to get into a bind of money was spoken for.
Yeah. There's the dilemma. So do we have a motion for splitting it?
We should.
Biggest part of Greg's budget, or excuse me, the biggest part of Greg's budget would be the towers. And then them aren't even going to be done until August. So the, the last payment's not going to be due till then. So I guess if we.
Yeah.
We've been delivering some of it about the last couple of years.
So I mean, we should have maneuver room until then if we have to see a budget amendment.
Twenty twenty-three budget, one point six. To date, anyway, whatever date that was, it's seven hundred seventeen thousand. So certainly there's nine hundred thousand. In the budget that I've set comes from towers, but I mean, certainly out of that, you could find sixteen-five.
I would think.
Easily.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So.
Well, I make a motion to enter into a cost sharing agreement with the city of Denison for the storm. Oh, yeah, fifty-fifty for the. One more storm warning better than the Yellow Smoke here.
Yeah, I got most of mine.
Okay.
Estimated sixteen thousand five hundred.
Estimated sixteen thousand five hundred. All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. Any further discussion?
You said one.
I did say one because we don't, we'll probably have to have another discussion in regards to that other one.
Just come back to us when you.
Just the one.
Just new picture.
You know, they give the grant for it, we're gonna have to be.
That's the other thing I've.
We can.
I kind of want here. Your blessing to go after that too. It'll be done in the cities, but obviously it's for our project.
I think you got that.
All right. That emotion, we have a second discussion. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. We are in the cost share fifty-fifty for the. Storm siren, that's kind of a sixteen thousand.
Thanks for looking at.
Yep, very important to have to do that.
Lot of room, lot of room there that we can kind of chart a path forward too, I think. Thank you.
All right, we are down to discussion, take action. National Public Health Week proclamation. Kim. That you have that proclamation.
It was in a packet?
I never saw the packet.
You gotta read the whole proclamation?
No, either is it? I thought you guys would read it.
Sure proclamation.
Where the kids read it last week.
Yeah. She brought some kids with.
Should've made it shorter.
I, Carrie, you have that for her?
Yeah.
She's got it.
All right.
All right. All right. So you want me to read it? All right. My best reading. My sign. Whereas the week of April first, twenty twenty-four is National Public Health Week and the theme is protecting, connecting, and thriving. We are all public health. And whereas since nineteen ninety-five, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public. Policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas US life expectancy dropped from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen in the longest sustained decline since the Great Recession. And only in twenty eighteen began to increase again. US life expectancy then dropped by two point seven years from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, which is the biggest two-year decline since nineteen twenty-one to nineteen twenty-three. And whereas there is a significant difference in health status, such as obesity or mental health and drug use. Among people living in rural areas compared with people living in urban areas. And this variance increases because rural residents are often more likely to face social determinants that negatively impact health, such as poverty. Transportation barriers and lack of economic opportunity. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death. And whereas women die from pregnancy-related complications in the US at a higher rate than in many developed countries. And an estimated sixty percent of maternal deaths in the US are preventable. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a whole range of health threats. Including disease outbreaks such as the COVID nineteen pandemic, measles, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. And whereas public health professionals collaborate with partners outside the health sector, including planners, transportation, education, and private businesses. Recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. And whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing and in some cases. Eliminating the spread of infectious diseases and in establishing today, today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequities. And a growing number of local, state governments and public health leaders have declared racism a public health crisis. And whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness. Into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now therefore, we, the Crawford County Board of Supervisors, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of Crawford County, Iowa. Do hereby proclaim the week of April first, twenty twenty-four, as National Public Health Week, twenty twenty-four. And call upon the people of Crawford County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health. And supporting great opportunities that enable us to make our communities and world more equitable, safe, healthy, and just places.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you.
Make a motion to classify this week as National Public Health Week in Crawford County.
I should have brought balloons.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the proclamation? All right, all favor aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All post same sign? All right, we proclaim this National Public Health Week.
Thank you, thank you, very nice. Thank you for all you do, Kim. It's not me, it's everybody.
Yeah, thank you for your whole group and what you do. So thanks for coming over.
Thanks for answering my questions, even when I sent them on the weekends and.
That's okay, that's what I am for.
Back to the, the surveying here, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
People call about the.
You can sign the back.
Oh, okay, there's our little box.
Alrighty, so our next item is a. Take action, discussion on the resolution to twenty twenty four dash nine, transferring funds from self insurance fund eighty five hundred to wellness fund. Four oh two zero zero. All right.
So this is to help cover the cost of the blood work that the county um. Supports our employees that have the health insurance and stuff, so.
I will make that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of transferring this?
It's a resolution. Sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
I'll do a roll, I'll vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, uh, resolution has been approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Citizens input.
Amy?
Home Smokey, Melissa from Home Smokey asked if anyone had any questions or anything about the renewal. Just wanted to see if you guys. You know, want to maybe put it on the agenda to get it approved so they can start doing their thing, but before they do that, if there was any questions or anything. I can get back to them so they can get answers.
Don't really have any.
I don't, I just had a couple employees at safety meeting that asked me how it's going to affect them. I said on the surface, it may look. And they said, oh, behind the scenes, you were not going to know there's a difference in your coverage. I'm never happy with that. They are paying attention to what's going on, but they. It's just what we talked about with some of the maybe change in deductibles that get my back. I think let's get on it, John.
I think so, get her on. I was pretty happy with all them stats and everything, you know, see some stuff.
Nothing else, they followed us.
This time I.
Actually understood a lot more compared to what we.
I thought you did a great job of.
Thanks, Amy.
All right, uh, Zoom, anyone out there that has a question or some comment that was unaddressed previously? Hearing none?
Go ahead, mom.
Go ahead, Patty.
Unmute.
You're on mute.
Doesn't look like it though.
I can see it, that's.
Why else are her?
There we go. I think you guys work together really well and it's a joy to watch your meetings. Um, I applaud Jared for his time and and, you know, giving back to the county and all the things that they do. But you guys all give a lot of your time to make our county a good county and I wish more people would realize. All the areas that you guys are involved in and how you guys work together and handle it. I just wish more people could see.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We try to work together. Sometimes we don't agree, but we work the right.
Well, you cannot agree but still be friends.
Thank you. Why we have five in this here. Bring the best out.
All right, seeing no more hands up, uh, I will call for adjournment. All right, second for adjournment.
Second.
All favor aye? Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to all that attended. Really appreciate it. I'm not accomplished again today. Thank you, you guys for. Okay, I will do my best. I will do my best.
You're right.